This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Higyo?
Here.
Mr. Compost?
Here.
Mr. Vandy?
Here.
Mr. Butcher?
Here.
Mr. Bow.
We value your company. Lord, I want to thank you for this evening. I want to thank you also for allowing us all gathered here today and express our opinions and so forth and evaluate the authority of the missions, seeing how well we're doing today, Lord. And we ask you to guide us this evening, Lord, with wisdom, good character, Lord, and a lot of strength. Thank you for all that you've given us. Thank you for allowing us to have a good first order, Lord. Thank you for the economy turning around for us, Lord. I want you to bless, ask you, Lord, to bless our soldiers, our law enforcement, our first responders, Lord. I want to also thank you for everything that you've given us, Lord. May you protect us, Lord, this month. The holidays are coming, Lord. May everybody be excited about it, be happy. The ones that are black, Lord, may we help contribute to them to ensure they have a happy holiday as well.
Let us lead, to be replied, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in everyty and justice sprawl. To be replied, the city of Mexico, that see as simple a perfect friendship among united cultures.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as committed except for the removal of the blood bucket test for Donalds.
Can be seconded by Mr. Bernard during discussion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mead, what was there?
We removed the law line in the top spot. Put on next four B. We amended that. Misses Scott.
Okay, thank you.
No further discussion. We'll call Chen.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Vandy?
Yes.
Mr. Higyo?
Yes. You have motion?
It's very important, make motion for considerations of minutes October 22nd. Most of the debate by Commissioner Andy, some of the by Commissioner Bow. There any discussion off the nets? There's no discussion off the nets. We'll call Chen.
Mr. Vandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Higyo?
Yes. And it's our approved. Move on to the proconations for small businesses Saturday. At pre-ressessances, I wonder if it is today of Jack this Timbrough and just eight minutes from contract. Small Business Saturday, profit basis for 2021, that's zero, zero four. Whereas the government of the city of Livingston celebrates our local small businesses and contributes they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small business employ 47.1% of employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small businesses owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of small businesses Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, by shopping small. 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business or small business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local small business or social media or shopped at a local business because of social media recommendations. And whereas city of Livingston supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the county have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I David, you're here, Mayor of Livingston, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday. Thank you. Honorable Judge Sanders is here. He's not up. Okay, Jim, here. Moving on to Commissioner and staff reports. Chen?
Yes, Mr. Bow had asked about the findings that were under shitty port in the audit. And one of them was on I9s. And when the ones that were presented to me, as being incomplete, were on the name and address bar. If there was any blank place there, like apartment number, for an example, you can't leave that blank. You have to write NA in every blank, if that one. And that's what we had done. And for the most part, that's what it was. So now we go back and we put NA in every blank if they don't fill out. That's what that was. Unemployment. The unemployment. Figures that were not reconciled and reported by 58,000. I don't know what that was. I don't know what they were reconciling to. But from the best I could see, what we loaded up to the state was correct as far as our figures for our employees. So I don't know. That's something that I would have to discuss with the auditors to see what figure they were using. Because the best I could see, they were doing it correctly. I don't know. The other matter was about uniform allowance. We issued checks to our employees for that. And those were reported on their taxes. There was one that put it on the debit card, and I missed that one. I did. So that can be important. And that's all.
That was a reference to the audit.
Yeah.
So on the I9s?
Uh huh.
We have that corrected?
Yeah.
On the uniforms, we have that corrected?
Yeah.
And then we got employment overpayment?
I don't know what that's. That is going to have to be something that, yeah, they discuss with me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other question for Chen? Or the question for Chen Tracy? Empty treasure? Certain question. Empty treasure? Come on, guys. Chief?
Mayor Commissioners, the one thing I want to bring up tonight for sure on the fire firm side is the county did donate over two fire trucks to the city of Livingston. One is a structure rig that we're using as a backup to our county grid structure. And then the other one is a grass rig. So definitely want to tell the county commission, thank you. And the county, thank you so much for getting that done for us and look to have it in service for four to all. Wanted to give that update. Senior citizens is still operating under the normal hours that they have been. And I haven't heard of any issues out there. And then that's, that's pretty much it. Library, I haven't heard anything that or so. That's all I have to think.
Turning questions for Chief?
As far as the other station two, station two.
Station two currently is housing one of our brass rigs and would house another ambulance that we have in the shop right now. Once we get back up fully staffed, that's the intention going forward to get individuals out there. But with us being short staffed right now and under the production force still, it's not being overrun right now.
Are we staffed as much as we possibly can be in this unit, or are we still under staff?
As far as the reduction of force, no, we're 100% staff working outside of that. We did give up one position on each one of the shifts to get the employees payback, 15% back for the fire guys. So but other than that, they're, they are back. Was that we did hire one position back about two, three weeks ago? We filled that, that one vacancy. So we're, we're up, up to it now. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other question for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bow?
A couple of things. That Saturday, we had a ribbon cutting for Mrs. Susanna. I mean, I hope I say her last name right. Her visa. She opened up a state fire business here in Livingston on Main Street. And just like to give a shout out to her. Thank her very much for bringing a new business into our city. And also, I heard today that we had a issue over at the high school. And I'd just like to say thank you to the Livingston High School and to the Livingston Police Department for handling this matter. Good response.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard? Mr. Dan? Mr. Cobbles?
Yes, Roger. I wanted to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Bow said. I think the PD took swift action to ensure that there were no issues regarding this incident. So once again, thanks to them as well. And to the Livingston schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobbles. Jayden?
Yes, sir. I just want to give the commission an update on the hiring process for the city manager and for the finance director. As you know, I've been working with Debbie Lee to post and publish those positions. So far, we have sent it out to Livingston leader for both Indeed, ZipRecruiter, the ICMA website, and of course, it's on our city website as well. So far, we've gotten a few applicants through Indeed for the city manager, but the way Indeed charges is $33 per applicant that you keep. So Terrence and I have been working to closely monitor those to make sure those are ones that we want to keep and are suitable for this position. So so far from Indeed, we've kept one. There has been two submitted through the ICMA website that we have. So in our folder altogether, there's three city manager applicants. And then for finance director, there was one that submitted that be kept. And then one that sent me an email that we have. So there's two applicants for the finance director. We decided, or Debbie Lee and Mayor decided that we're going to keep that, those over the city manager position open until November 30th. And then if the commission wants to come back and consider keeping it open, we will do that at that time. So far, with estimating cost wise that we spent going out to the newspaper and what we anticipate, or we haven't considered the cost of what we will spend for the Indeed, just because like I said, it's $33 per applicant. But so far through everything for both positions, it's been a total of like $1,800. So just letting you know that. Debbie Lee should be here on November 23rd, so we can discuss the next process on selecting city manager. And then I did want to let you guys know that we are possibly looking at December 6th for us to review the city manager applicants. I don't know for sure on this date, but if you guys can keep that date open on your schedule, whenever Debbie comes, we'll know for sure if that's the day that we want to do that. So just leave December 6th open. And I believe that's it on that part. So if you have any questions, I'm open.
I just want to make one comment. Chief and Jayden both are following the guidelines throughout during their work session with Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee has 35 years' experience as city manager. So they're following the guidelines. If they don't meet the guidelines that were laid out, their applications put off the side. But as far as we have, three for city manager and two for treasure position. Mr. Dan?
Over to you.
Mr. Bow. Anything else, Jayden?
Nothing else, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Cobbles, you have anything?
Oh, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief David?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners continues on a study for the proposed absorption of LPD dispatch into LCCA, which I will be presenting to the board as a non-action item in a little bit. I believe the Lee County Board of Commissioners will be voting on November 18th on their donation of four of their police interceptor units to LPD. So we hope that goes well. And finally, the police department will set up a community meet and greet in early December for the public to voice their concerns and give their feedback about public safety issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you, Chief. Turning. Questions for Chief David?
I have a couple of questions, and you'll probably cover them where you're going over. But I'm just going to ask anyways. I've been asked, because doing the merger, how would that affect response time, like with what we had won today? I've been asked about that. I said, I really don't know. I have to ask you.
And that is one reason why luckily County Manager Mike Alverde and Angela Martinez, they had LCCA here today. And they're going to better answer that question after my PowerPoint. Because I think they're better suited to, to answer that question. But that is one of the big questions that everybody, it's on everybody's mind.
Right. I figured I would have to say so. I figured you were going to touch base, but I just figured I asked anyways.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Mr. Crystal?
Um, yeah, I have a, the hangar at the airport that the city owns the structure. This is a picture of the structure. It had been put in the works about a year and a half ago by city manager that this building would be given back to the county. We actually leased the property it sits on from the county. Our leases, actually, we didn't sign the new one. That was supposed to be what happened. But since we didn't sign the new lease agreement, the county has wanted to know what we, what our intentions with this building are. Did you just have the one picture, Jane? There were several different pictures of it that the county sent me. So the county is asking that we just basically get this building to them, and they can either demolish it or repair it and do what they need to do with it. Because we don't own the property the building sits on. So we need to either get rid of the building and do something with it, or give it back to them and let them.
Make that a next, and I don't want our next.
Yeah, I just wanted to know which direction you guys would prefer to go on. Some kind of guidance.
Is there any salvage value on the $10 each layer, or is that pretty old?
Well, doll, I have never been out there to it. So all I have is just those photos that were sent to me by the county.
And it's been there how long?
I have no idea. Recently got this last week on Wednesday to try to figure out anything and everything about it. And this, all I know. The lease, I know the lease is $372 annually is what we pay to lease the property that the building sits on. But I know in the, in the agreement, we're supposed to keep that building up to COVID, and it is not.
The lease?
The lease is 372. Oh, it was up in February of this year. I have no idea when we started leasing that hangar. Yeah. That's a good question. I.
Well, if you're up in here, I don't know.
What was the building actually? Who did that?
The police department stored large evidence.
Yeah, it's all cleaned out.
Yes. Because when we make this one over here, that's where our stuff starts. So it hasn't been used.
Do you want to act, and I don't want to discuss, and I don't want to next. Act, and I don't want to next four weeks.
And then I needed to update on the magistrate building. We met with the architects and of course, Lee County electric was there, just discussing how we're going to move electric poles and things like that in that area. And that went over well. They also met with the SMP architects on that project. They met with the NMDOT and went over the issues of the sidewalk because NMDOT's project and there's, are both got a course on on that area. But the meeting went well, and I don't think there's going to be any issues there. So still moving forward with that project. I know they're out to bid right now for the job. The Alma Griffin property that was requested a zone change from an R1 to an R3 up on Ninth, north of Dogwood area. You guys recall that, that I talked to you about? The county actually denied that action. So that zone change did not go through. That's all I have to repeat.
Turning questions for Chris? Chris, Chris? Turning, McMahon?
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything new to add other than what's coming up on Dawson Geopical, which is an action item. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are questions wanted.
Turning questions right now? No questions? Thanks. Honorable Judge Sanders is here. You guys swear in. Chief David Moran?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Evening. How are you doing? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Judge Mark Sanchez. It's my pleasure to see you. Please swear in. David Miranda is your new police chief. You've been serving in that capacity for a while. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Chief Miranda, repeat after me. I, David Miranda.
I, David Miranda.
Duly appointed police chief.
Duly appointed police chief.
For the city of Livingston.
For the city of Livingston.
New Mexico.
New Mexico.
Do you only swear that I will support the Constitution?
Do you only swear that I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
The ordinances of the city of Livingston?
The ordinances of the city of Livingston.
New Mexico?
New Mexico.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Very well done. Thank you. If you needed to sign the oath, I'm happy to sign it for you. It's like getting a warrant signed. It is.
Thanks, Roger.
You're welcome. Thank you for inviting me to do this.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to public comment? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You want to make the staff update?
Yes. Yeah, she's, go ahead.
Mayor Commissioners, I just wanted to give an update on the capital appropriation project, $150,000 for the Livingston Animal Shelter. It is for the planned, designed, and struck purchase and equipped a new animal service facility and shelter in Livingston in Lee County. On this, as I was going through, we do also have to, what is it? Is a reimbursement grant. And at one point, we have six months. So we're going to have to come before you to see if we can do a budget adjustment, because we're going to have to appropriate 5% of that and into our current budget in order to be able to meet the requirements of this grant. And then staff is going to see about options for putting it into the next fiscal year. We're going to have to budget that out into the next fiscal year in order to meet the grant requirements. I'll be looking into other avenues of funding sources and operations for the shelter as well, to try to help with that funding. Do you all have any questions on that? Okay. And then last but not least, the employee appreciation days. In the past, the city has that employee appreciation day. And then they also did the Christmas party. In the last year, we did, were able to do that. We did something like online type thing. So this year, what we have planned to do is an employee appreciation day. It's going to be Thursday, December the 9th. It's for employees only. We'd like to invite the commissioners to attend. It's going to be from 12:30 to 5:00 p.m. We will need to close down city services in order for all city employees to attend. And the theme is going to be 80s theme. And we will have gift cards for everybody who decides to dress up in the 80s theme. And we will have a grand drawing prize for that. Do you all have any questions?
What went on in the 80s?
Pardon?
What went on in the 80s?
I will have one for each of you. I need this back possible by Thursday, or CP on that, so that way we can plan for food.
Or you guys want to send me a text?
Yes. Or you can get it back to Jaylen.
We appreciate you very much, Lori.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to public comment.
I am Paul Baskis, and I want to voice my opinion. I've been reading the newspaper on the city commissioners. And I think y'all should step down and let other people step up. Because I see Livingston, and I see it all ugly, trucks on the side, big trucks, RVs everywhere. I know one residential zone, three RVs, four RVs. I tried to do something that happened to me. I had three RVs. I called the police. They didn't do anything. I'm disappointed at the police. We're going to raise salaries here. Let's raise them to school teachers. Let's raise them to us. Let's see city employees. Wheels, I do wheels on wheels. Let's raise us that we work hard in the kitchen. Delivering food for older people. Let's talk about that. I'm disappointed on each of y'all. Each of you. And people don't mean, David Ruiro knows me, Paul Campo knows me pretty good. I lived here all my life. And I see the streets in Livingston. I'm real disappointed. Real disappointed. Back in the day, 77 years ago, there was a zoning. You couldn't park no big trucks, water trucks on the side of the. Back in the day, ten, seven years ago, there was a zoning. You couldn't park no big trucks, water trucks on the side of road or in the residential area. We got them all over now. That's my opinion. Step down. We voted union, we can vote you up. Put a box right there and we'll vote you up. This is my opinion. I'm so disappointed. No, all of y'all. This is my opinion.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Timothy Boyston. I'm the Vice Manager of the American Region. And I wasn't here for your last meeting because I was on vacation. But I want to thank the, the out of our barbecue. It was, it was at six, six, success. And we did, we did good with participation of the city employees, everybody who showed up, everybody else for it. I want to thank you for it. Also, on that note, Thursday is Veterans Day. We will be, we will be handing out, or not handing out, but we're having breakfast. On, at the American Legion Hall. We invite the city, we invite all veterans to come and have breakfast from five thirty in the morning until ten o'clock, ten thirty. Or we run out, one to two. And so, hope to see you all there, everybody.
Appreciate you.
Okay, and give time for your employees to have, come and have breakfast. The ones that actually can't come before five thirty and eight. If they happen and want to come, they left right or something like that, make time for them. We appreciate it. All that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. General Public Comment. The public comment, we move on to.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, the first on action item is a discussion of the library board appointments by Jaylen.
The library board has three positions that their terms are expired. That's Miguel Miller Cruz, Judge Dave Finger, Ava Binge. Judge Finger and Ava both expressed that they want to continue serving. Miguel has it. Express that he does not want to continue. This will go for advertisement and this week's edition of the Lovington Leader. And then at the next commission meeting, we will put somebody or all three of them. So if anybody's interested, if you've got a community at City Hall, if you know anybody, send them over to City Hall. So we can fill those positions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
Next item is discussion of the community project on the recreational fields by Judith Taylor, Lovington High School Key Club.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
And so I presented the community proposal that each of you got. And then I also everybody, my family's calling me because of what happened today. So, all right, I will message them later. So, and so this was my first proposal. So hopefully, so what I did is I just kind of went through and gave some of the top fourteen needs on there. I don't know if you, did you put any of that on there, Jaylen?
It's on there.
Okay, all right. So do I need to go through all fourteen of those or do y'all have any questions on any of those fourteen needs? But is there any on there that you had questions or I can clarify any of what? And then I gave pictures of our sign. That's probably been there. Well, I know it was there since I did it when I was a ninth grader. So I think that sign needs to kind of be updated. I forgot that it was the Herald Run Congressional. And then I did have one question where it said it was a cooperative project with the New Mexico Natural Resource Department and U S Department of Interior. I didn't know if they had provided some funds or I didn't know what that was. Okay, and then I just took pictures. So the first picture that you'll see is of the gate. I just think we need kind of a better gate than, than what is there. And there are scoreboards on all four fields. Three of them have Coca-Cola on them, one does not. So I don't know if they're working or where any of the controls are, if that would even work them. And and then I took pictures of where some of the fence was down that needs to be replaced. And then I didn't realize there was three bathrooms, but there's three bathrooms. And I did a picture of one which is kind of workable. And then the nest that's in there that needs to be cleaned. And then one was the one that was vandalized. That all of that would need to be replaced. And then I guess that is football stuff. From when we had football leagues out there in another bathroom that looks workable. So that's it. We're ready to get started and ready to start figuring out what we can do and get going.
Well, it's certainly something that's doable. I think what the city needs to do is talk to our people in Parks and Rec and see what which one of these fourteen, all of them, some of them are acceptable projects for the city that we want to undertake. And there may be some of them that are prioritized. You know, number three may be more important than number twelve, let's say, for example. So I think that would be the next step is to make sure that each one of these planned projects is something that doesn't increase perhaps the amount of maintenance that we've got to do or that fits in with whatever the plan is for that particular recreational facility or field or restroom. And then once we get some confirmation back from Parks and Rec, then I think council can move forward and say, yeah, these are the ones that we like. This is the kind of timeframe we have and then put something together. But I, you know, I can't really say what it needs or doesn't need. And I think each one of the council, unless you've been out there and studied it, is in that position either. So that's what needs to happen next is for these, this plan and the fourteen items on here to get out to Parks and Rec and say, okay, this is what Key Club wants to do, what's going to work, what's acceptable, is there some things we can add to this? So that's where we need to go next.
I think what we can do is off the schedule, whenever you have time, just let me know, maybe in the morning or afternoon, I have to schedule again, Bernard. To go out there, his site, and we can have some discussion.
We have, we have done that. That's where we came up with this list is with him already. Or I don't know if it was Bernardo or the one. Larry, what's his name? Yes, it was Larry that I went with. Because Bernardo wasn't, I don't know where he was, but I met with Larry. And so Larry and I went through. And this is kind of some of the things that we talked about on our list.
Yeah, because I want to get a feel on like what you want to do out there. I know that's a big task, but I think Bernardo already had a schedule on
Right.
of press everything out there. For working.
Right. You just let me know. I can be here anytime after school, so.
My question would be is, what are the four projects that Key Club that they're capable of raising funding for and physically doing? Because some of those are beyond their skill levels.
No, we have people already looking at giving us stuff for the infield. Because you can't play softball if there's not an infield. I mean, the painting can kind of wait, but if you're trying to get people in here, that kind of looks tacky and kind of looks poor.
I didn't know what, what you thought your.
We want it ready for softball. We want it ready for softball.
They're willing to do those. The restroom will probably end up having a ball on either the city or a different contractor or something like that.
Right. Well, I think they were checking to see insurance wise.
Right.
If that's covered under vandalism, if y'all even have insurance up there, city or, so I haven't heard anything back from that.
Okay, nice. So which would be your third project to start? Infields then?
We're starting on the infield. Yeah, it's taking one infield at a time.
What, what supplies are you using for the infield?
Well, I have to get a go ahead before I can start talking to people. Because I don't like talking to people and saying, hey, we're going to try to do this, but and get, and then you have to go back and say, oh, sorry, we can't do it. When they've already tried to go through theirs and try to find. So I have different names of people that can get some aggregate out there.
Or is it aggregate?
Yeah, and I already have someone that said they would use their equipment, their man to come and scrape the field and get it going. People that's already done it are, and then has done it before out there.
Basically, you just, we just need paperwork since you got some.
Exactly. I just need to say a yes. Let's go with it.
I think that's what we're discussing. We just need some plan together. Want to make sure we don't overlap with the
Right.
Bernardo's the one that's leading back on Parks and Rec's industry. I'd like to see a plan together. What, what your objective is, what's our objective, what's the target?
Because it's starting to get cold. So I say, I mean, anytime this week I'm available. Yeah, and then I don't, I mean, I didn't get to go into the concession stand. So I don't know if all of the equipment for the scoreboards are in there. I know back in the eighties, when I was playing church league, they were working. But I don't know that they worked. I haven't paid attention if they're working since I was in high school. So give me, do I need to talk with, I mean, do you want me to set up? Because I have his number. I can set up a meeting and then. So then you want it at night or? Well, I mean, this is where it's getting dark.
So, Bernardo going to be our point of contact for the city?
He is.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to make sure. I have point of contact for the city. Concentrate on the field. Do you want to concentrate on everything that's created? Now I want to see about a project analysis and the fair and practical, what we're looking to do, people you're going to have involved, what's going to be going on. So we know who's responsible for what. The stars outside out, Key Club, the city, what you're going to need to get this project going and get it done. Because I know times of essence and getting it done so the kids can play is important to everybody. So that's just what I wanted to see to make sure that we have no hiccups. Everything is there straight in front of us. We know what we're doing.
Right.
We've got a good plan. We can get it done.
So Jaylen, do you want to get with him and see? I mean, let's do, I can do Wednesday, Thursday. I don't have seventh period. So even if it's like two thirty.
May you. It's fine.
Okay. I'll get with Larry and maybe then I'll text you. Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions or?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to present to you an analysis and discussion of absorption of the Lovington Dispatch into LCCA, which stands for the Lee County Communication Authority. First off, I'd like to thank County Manager Mike Gallagher, Commissioner Dean Jackson, Sheriff Corey Helton, and LCCA Director Angela Martinez. Throughout the whole process, they have been accessible, extremely helpful. Gotten us all the information we've asked for. I've had no less than five meetings with them. And no matter which way we go, I owe them my thanks because they really made the process easy. So thanks to them and Mike and Andrew and Commissioner Dean Jackson are actually here tonight. So I'd like to break this down. It's probably going to take fifteen or twenty minutes. There's about twenty-three slides. It's an important topic. So I felt like we needed, I needed to get you as much information as I've been able to gather the past three, three or so weeks. You know, where we are now in terms of our current dispatch. What has changed? Why are we talking about this here today? Going to details of the current LCCA proposal. Obviously, the impact, right? Who's affected? The community, our dispatchers and our police officers. What would the alternative be? Because we do have to make a choice here. Inaction is a choice. If we choose not to do this, that is making a choice. And I tried to look at where, how that would impact us. A little bit about LCCA, the cost analysis, timeline, because there's a lot of moving parts in this. Because it also involves Tatum, Jalen, Muniz potentially. And then questions and comments and Commissioner Bolt, I think your question earlier would be best answered by either Angelo or Mike. So currently, our current coverage area, LPD currently serves a population, I think of the last census, eleven thousand, six hundred. There's three thousand in the surrounding areas. Currently, we have authorized positions for officers, sworn officers of twenty-eight, sixteen are currently filled. That's a sixty-three percent staffing rate. LPD Dispatch currently has five dispatchers out of an authorized allowance of eight positions. What people don't realize is LPD Dispatch has not been fully staffed for over ten years. We've had difficulty hiring dispatchers. This is a look at our calls for service. You see a fall off after two thousand and nineteen. That's the COVID and oil field slump. What's interesting to note though is two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, the city of Lovington actually had six homicides during that time period. We hadn't had a homicide of ten years before that, not a single one. So we expect those numbers to go back up. So the current dispatcher duties, what do they do? They receive calls, emergency, non-emergency for service and information from our citizens. They dispatch our police, animal control, code enforcement. We do not dispatch to fire EMS. They monitor fire and EMS, P D and EMS radio traffic. They perform various clerical duties. Most importantly, they perform warrants and entity and vehicle checks, license plate checks for our officers via radio. Because we do not have MDTs, which are known as mobile data terminals. And we are one of the only agencies in the county that does not have this. They generate reports for our officers. They greet and serve the walk-in citizens. So like I said, our current dispatch status, only five of eight positions are currently filled, even though we advertise constantly. The division is in a state of employee and overtime fatigue. And that's, to be clear, our dispatchers have worked tirelessly through the past year and a half during the staffing shortage and have shown loyalty and dedication to our city. I think we had one dispatcher this last paper who put in seventy hours of overtime. So these people are tired. They have outdated equipment. They don't dispatch to Lovington Fire EMS. Currently, and this is through default of their own, they're not nine one one and EMD certified, which can be a liability issue. If we were forced to begin dispatching nine one one on our own, it would require a huge capital infusion. So what has changed? Why are we here? Due to the increased speed of a move to centralized regional dispatch centers, Lee County's recently placed a much higher emphasis on consolidating local municipal dispatches in our area. So it's been talked about for over ten years, but it's fast becoming a reality. New Mexico State Police has already done it. They only have three dispatchers for the entire state. Our police, state police in this area get dispatched out of Las Cruces. They've already made that move. So New Mexico's only had four or five regional dispatch centers, which Governor has said she wants to happen. LCCA would obviously want the regional dispatch center for southeastern New Mexico to be in Hobbs rather than at Roswell. LCCA would obviously want the regional dispatch center for southeastern New Mexico to be in Hobbs rather than at Roswell. Because of this increased urgency on the county's part, LCCA has now made new generous and legitimate offers to us, Tatum, Unis, and Jow. Unis is a little bit ahead of us in the process, and I'd say Tatum is about with us and Jow, I think they're still talking to. This, this has to be voted on by three commissions or boards. Again, we've had five meetings on this topic, County Manager, the Sheriff, LCCA Director, Chief Lizardo, Mayor Truettio, Dean Jackson. And I made sure to include LPD Dispatch in every step of the way. They have met with the above entities, some of our dispatchers have been given a tour of LCCA. They have a voice in this process. I've also reached out to Chief Jackson and Chief Arcitas. So, okay, so what is the LCCA proposal, first option? Commissioner, County Manager Gallagher, if I get anything wrong, please correct me. Because I'm speaking for you here. LCCA would take over all emergency and some non-emergency calls for service previously handled by LPD Dispatch. LCCA would create five to six additional dispatch slots to cover the increase in call volume from Lovington. Previously, in past negotiations, they had asked for three to four hundred thousand dollars for this annually. And that involved a board seat. What's different this time is they are offering it to us for free. Now, this comes with a small price, the smaller agencies would not have a board seat on LCCA. Us, Unis, Jow, Tatum, but they would form an advisory board to LCCA for any concerns or issues that our small communities might have going forward. So, here's one of the most crucial things, Lovington dispatchers would not face a pay cut. They would make the greater of, one, LCCA starting salary, which is currently sixteen sixty an hour, but at their commission meeting on Thursday, they have proposed to raise this to twenty-two dollars an hour. Or, two, dispatchers would stay at their current salary, whichever's higher. Lovington dispatchers would receive the county's insurance and retirement benefits, which means less out-of-pocket expenses for the dispatcher and thus more take-home pay. Because the county's benefit package is a little richer than ours. But, very important, they would take their tenure or years of seniority with them. They wouldn't be coming in as a year-one rookie, since one of our dispatchers has thirty-one, thirty years and one has twenty-one years. So, they retain this seniority. And this would give them benefits in terms of vacation time and the county pays seniority bonuses that are given every year. To do this, we would have to migrate from our Capers CAD, which stands for Computer Automated Dispatching Database, to an alternate database known as Spillman. Spillman's used by Hobbs Police Department, the Sheriff's Office. They had previously been on Capers, they moved away from Capers about six or seven years ago. And this is key, because we've talked about this for over five, ten years. This is of great importance. We have negotiated for the county to purchase, install, and program twelve new, uh, brand-new MDTs, which stands for Mobile Data Terminals, equipped with Spillman database for our LPD patrol units, and eight MDTs for Lovington Fire and EMS units, also equipped with Spillman. With possible cost savings from this merger, the police department itself could possibly also equip another two to four units. So, we'd have most, if not all, of our patrol units with in-car mobile data terminals with the Spillman database. Just the MDTs alone represent a hundred and twenty thousand dollar value, which is six thousand per MDT laptop times twenty units and with all the bells and whistles that LCCA is assuming. LCCA is supposed to pay for all LPD officers, a records clerk, and an evidence clerk to all be under Spillman database that have seats. We keep the Capers as a read-only database for the past eight years of records. If we were to try to do this on our own, I've been told from scratch, it would cost at least two hundred thousand dollars. And again, the Spillman database allows our officers and our records people to tie in to HPD and the county's records database. So, we all share information, which was the point of originally being on Capers, which didn't work out. So, with Spillman, with their MDTs, LPD officers would now be connected in their cars to NCIC. They would be able to conduct arrest warrant checks, driver's licenses checks, license plate checks from their units without having to radio when to dispatch. And again, most agencies, other agencies have had this for years. The officers would see the calls as they come out on their Spillman laptop in their unit. They'd show the information received from the caller, including the GPS location of the caller. Lovington Fire and EMS would have access in their units to all oilfield roadmaps along with GPS locations of callers, which is very important. Still in negotiation stage, when I wrote this, was whether LCCA would do an annual Spillman maintenance fee, right? All databases hit you up every year for that maintenance fee. County Manager Gallagher, I believe, gave me some good news on that just today. So, that's the proposal for LCCA. So, impact, who's affected? The proposal would be from our current five dispatchers to, down to two record clerks, and they'd be the two most senior dispatchers. Their duties would be somewhat similar, maintain and provide local records, monitor radio traffic, greet the public. But also, we would add two more duties to maintain accreditation standards, which is previously done by the vacant admin lieutenant position, which is going to stay close probably for a while, serve as backup evidence technicians. So, they, those two would continue to be city employees. The three remaining would have the option to apply for LCCA, they could dispatch to positions, LCCA already has four open. So, now, if they absorb Lovington alone without Unis, Jow, and Tatum, they would have ten openings. So, safe to say, there'd probably be some openings where our three dispatchers could apply to. And again, under those terms, no pay cut, LCCA benefits, and they take their years of service with them. They would have to upgrade their training to get nine-one-one certified. It would be at no cost to them, they'd have a year to do it. Of those three, two have already expressed an interest to go to LCCA. So, they're not too worried about the change. One question the commissioner may want to ask, would they offer any dispatchers of the three not going, that would not be working here, would they be able to transfer to another city department? What could the possible negatives to the three LPD dispatchers be? That would be change, uncertainty, and then there's the commute to college. Public. So, re-education would be in Lovington as it has in other communities, to teach the people that need, they need to call nine-one-one for all emergency calls now, not Lovington Dispatch. And they can call our department for non-emergency calls. During business hours, they'd be able to walk in and speak with one of our two clerks there in the lobby, just like they do now. During non-business hours, the caller would be given an annual list of options to select from, directing them to the proper department or division. So, the incorrect perception of non-localized service. We're still going to have officers at the police department, we're still going to respond for the Lovington Police Department. And we're still going to be able to respond to walk-in calls at the PD twenty-four seven, there's always going to be officers there. I did mention the perception of increased call response times, which I'll let the county manager address. So, what's the alternative? What if we say no? Possibility that we would have to take over nine-one-one calls for dispatching for all our local fire and EMS and police. We are not equipped to do this currently. And I've been told that just to upgrade, it would take over two hundred thousand dollars, due pretty much immediately, and it'd be at least a hundred and twenty thousand a year going forward, just to have that ability. We would need to upgrade the infrastructure, the consoles, the computers. And we'd have to add to our dispatchers, we'd have to have the full eight, we'd have to have the two people at a time. Currently, some shifts are only one dispatcher. So, that's an increase, right, salaries, that would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars increase, plus your hundred and twenty thousand for hookups. That's annual costs. And then again, we wouldn't receive our MDTs in our units, which eventually we're going to have to get, and it's going to be expensive. That's kind of the downside. Information about LCCA from what I've gathered, most of their dispatchers from the state are still working there. They work eight-hour shifts, they rotate, they get merit raises. They currently handle Sheriff's Office, Lee County Volunteer Fire EMS, Lovington Fire EMS, Hobbs Fire Police and EMS. They already handle one third of our emergency calls anyway, and they handled two hundred and twenty-two thousand calls for service last year. So, we looked at the impact to the community, we looked at the impact to the people, so what's the cost, what are the numbers? Our current five dispatchers, we take salary, compensation, benefits, is two hundred and eighty-five thousand. To keep two of them, that would cost a hundred and twenty-one thousand, so that is a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar immediate payroll savings alone. Spillman cost, I'll let Mike talk about that. It may cost us an annual small connectivity cost to be hooked up to those MDTs. We would lose out, we would gain a hundred and sixty thousand dollar value if those MDTs were purchased by the county. We would gain a two hundred thousand dollar value if Spillman was purchased for us by the county. And then, don't forget, previous offers have come with a four hundred thousand dollar price tag, and that they're now saying is zero. So, if you kind of look at the impact versus the possible gains, and what we would get versus what we would end up having to increase our budget, it's really, the real dollar value of the benefits is five hundred and twenty-four thousand. But, if you add in that four hundred thousand dollar price tag, which had previously been talked about, the value of what we would be getting is approximately nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and what we'd be receiving in terms of the databases, the savings, and things like that. So, the option of staying independent, rather than realizing a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar cost saving because of three dispatchers moving elsewhere, we would have to add. So, we would have to add three to the five at an average of fifty-seven thousand dollars per person. So, that's an additional hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So, the potential annual cost increase of staying independent is going to be in the neighborhood of three, three hundred thousand dollars. If we needed to upgrade, make additional personnel hires, and kind of divorce ourselves from nine-one-one. We wouldn't have Spillman, we wouldn't have the MDTs, we'd have increased liability, because, you know, nine-one-one has higher standards. So, potentially, the impact could be over a million dollars. So, the upcoming timeline kind of gives you a, we have our meeting today, LCCA's meeting with Jow tomorrow, but you've got the county commission, and you've got the LCCA board. And then we'll read fast on this, that kind of gives you a timetable of upcoming things. We only have two board meetings left here this year. So, I don't know.
Chief, can I ask just one question, just from your experience? So, you have two numbers, you have the three-nine-six-twenty-eight-eleven, and you have the nine-one-one. So, when someone dialed nine-one-one, how does that go out in your department?
Currently?
Yes.
It goes to LCCA.
Just want to clarify.
And then they dispatch back to us.
Just want to clarify that, we don't receive nine-one-one calls, it goes to LCCA.
No, we're not capable of it.
Only if they dial twenty-eight-eleven is when they.
They reach us directly, that could be an emergency or a non-emergency call.
That's maybe for non-emergency calls, that's what it's designed for.
Before nine-one-one, it was for both, but now, like I said, in my estimation, LCCA currently would be about a third. And I, by nine-one-one calls, I mean emergency calls rather than non-emergency calls, you know, what's the number, the animal shelter, what's, you know, any records, that type of thing. And I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry.
Before we turn, turn it over to the county manager, could I ask the chief a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Chief, can you hear me?
Chief, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
What is the, the Spillman's annual?
The annual, I don't have a number on that, but I think County Manager might give you a better answer than that here shortly.
Okay, thank you, and also, what do your dispatchers think about this? What do your officers think about this move?
The officers are very excited about getting MDTs in their units, something we have long wanted. We wouldn't even give it to detectives or admin staff, this is going to be for the patrol officers, the guys who are on the street. Eventually, not at this level of MDT, but in the future, they would be able to do their reports on their terminals, on their laptops, in their units, that means they're on the street more, they have more community presence, and they're in the station less to do paperwork. A few of them have expressed the same concern that some citizens have, like, are we going to use, lose that kind of localized service, that hometown touch? And, you know, change is difficult, the vast majority are very excited about the move, potentially, you know, since our dispatchers are going to be taken care of, we care about our dispatchers, they, they keep us safe. So, obviously, they're okay, other than that, in terms of getting the Spillman, which is a better system than Capers, getting the MDTs. Because this is something that, let's face it, we're nowhere near getting this equipment in the future. We don't have the money, it's expensive. So, that's why this is a decision that's very crucial. I'm not going to say this is a once-in-a-lifetime decision or opportunity, but it's certainly a once-in-a-generation opportunity. It's a big decision, so.
And what do your dispatchers say, chief?
They were a little nervous, there was a lot of misinformation out there. County Manager Gallagher, LCCA Director Martinez gave us a three-hour tour of the dispatch center, explained that they weren't going to get their pay cut, explained that they could take their years of service with them, the benefit package would be better, but people, I think they're a lot more comfortable with it now. Like I said, two would stay, so it doesn't affect them. Of the three, two had already expressed an interest to go to LCCA, so it's kind of doing for them what they might have already done anyway. And there's just one who's, he has some personal issues now, so he's not even really thinking about it, but he's got other things on his agenda for the moment, so there's not a big pushback from dispatch. They just were appreciative to get real information, real numbers, real facts.
All right, very good, thank you, chief, I'll yield to the county manager, thank you. Sup, Tom, what are you doing? Every time this plane walks up, you get in the way. All right, so, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I think the chief did a really great job of summarizing the items and the discussion. I'll back up just a little bit. First and foremost, you know, I'm a resident of Lovington, right? So, I live here, I lived here since, I've been here since December of two thousand and ten. A number of our dispatchers, we have dispatchers that currently live in Lovington that work for us. We had dispatchers also live in Jow and Unis that worked at LCCA. So, I think what I would like to emphasize, and I'll answer or attempt to answer all of your questions, and Angela will provide backup for me. But, what we're trying to do is make all the entire community, all of Lee County, safer and decrease, you know, emergency response time. And, so, one, LCCA dispatching for each community, in our assessment, makes each community safer, because it decreases response time. I recognize that there have been, and I know Commissioner Jackson and Angela and our team members recognize that there have been some concerns, and I'm going to call some of those maybe barriers. recognize that there have been some concerns, and I'm gonna call some of those maybe barriers. So the city of Lovington joining or allowing LCCA dispatch for the city of Lovington. One of those barriers that we've discussed has been cost. So, you know, back in 2011, the city of Hobbs in Lee County, we merged our dispatchers together. We took nine dispatchers from Lee County, fifteen dispatchers from, uh, the city of Hobbs, and we combined them together. So we had two of the law, the two largest law enforcement agencies in the county. We merged them together and it worked. Uh, we've been doing this together since 2011. In 2012, we opened our new facilities on College Lane, it's a state-of-the-art facility, it's beautiful, happy to walk anyone through the facility. Since we have, the time we've merged and constructed our facility, we've received about six-point-seven-million dollars in grant funding from the state. And that's funding that we've been able to invest into new computers, screens, radios, radios, radios. We're constantly updating the radios because they typically have a five-year life, right? So, you know, we are always updating and upgrading to ensure that, uh, we follow the life expectancy of our equipment, and we've replaced our equipment prior to them becoming, prior to them meeting their expected, uh, life end. So we've had our consolidation in 2011. Our building, that was completed, we opened the doors in June of 2012. Uh, a number of items about LCCA, we've received a number of accolades. We were the first consolidated dispatch center in the state to receive an accreditation through the New Mexico Municipal League and the New Mexico Counties. Uh, we did that first in 2015. Uh, the second one was in 2018, and starting on November the fifteenth, it's gonna be a busy week, fifteenth, uh, sixteen, seventeenth, we'll start our assessment for our third, uh, reaccreditation. We received some congressional accolades, we're the only agency in the entire state of New Mexico that has received certification to the National Missing and Exploited Persons. Uh, we are, have a certification to handle, uh, missing and abused children. Not even the state of New Mexico, CYFD has that, or New Mexico State Police. So, all that aside, I know that doesn't address, that there's still concerns that the community may have. I think first, now, recognizes that, recognize that there are residents in Lovington that work at the county, right? I'm myself included, right? So they work at the county, be it at the courthouse, be it at the sheriff's office, the detention center, or at LCCA. I think that's a really important item to keep in mind. The next item, I think is important, is what we're looking at here is to address, I think, one of the first barriers is cost. Well, we're suggesting what our proposal is, that there's no cost, right? So even the stillman maintenance, annual maintenance cost, we're proposing to absorb that. So we're looking at the annual cost, uh, for else, to, for, uh, the dispatch for Lovington, it's around four-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-thousand dollars a year, roughly, when you include the costs for stillmen, those other items. We're, we're looking at absorbing that. So, in return, we just would like, you know, uh, I'm not sure what we want to turn that on, I guess the community support. That's really what this is about. We want to make everything safer, not saying it's not safe now. But, uh, the chief brought up the concern related to, you know, having regional dispatch centers, right? That is happening, that's an item. Second, in terms of mutual aid, right? So right now, we have the Lee County Sheriff's Office, our volunteer fire departments, they provide aid to the city of Lovington. I think there's been some discussion about whether some of that aid could be expanded or not. It's very important, if that aid is going to be expanded, that, uh, LCC, the city of Lovington is a member of LCCA. And that membership would come at zero cost to the city of Lovington. In terms of dispatchers, we've met with two, had a pleasure of meeting with, uh, two dispatchers. And, um, I, you know, I thought we had a good meeting. And what we were looking at, what the chief said, we value their years of experience, we value their years of service to, uh, the city. We would want them to come on with us, we would credit them those years of service. And so they would earn annually that the rate that an employee earns annually, that, you know, twenty-one years of service, or thirty-one years of service, whatever it is that those dispatchers, whatever service they have. Our pay, we're proposing, we have a proposal in front of the county commission and the LCCA board directors to increase pay. A certified dispatcher, I'm sorry, an uncertified dispatcher, it would start at twenty-two dollars an hour. A certified dispatcher will start at twenty-eight dollars an hour. So we're putting a lot, we're investing a lot into our, the first of our first responders, and that's really what our dispatchers are. I could really go on for a while. Myself and one other person, he's a county employee, Lorenzo Velasquez, uh, we've been the, we're the only two, uh, members on the board that have been on the board since its inception. So I came to the county in December of 2010, this discussion was already in the works. Uh, but I've been on the board, uh, since, uh, emerged in 2011. And I'm very proud of the work that we do. Think it's important to note, and let me emphasize what the chief said, we're currently handling dispatching for Lovington Fire and Lovington EMS. So we're not talking about something entirely, we're really talking about dispatching for really Lovington PD. Uh, and some of the other calls, uh, maybe roads or utilities or amp control. So we're already handling for, for, uh, Lovington Fire and EMS. We handle all 911 calls. And I know that there are a number of folks that call the, what would you call it, I forget the number, three-nine-six?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight eleven.
Twenty-eight eleven, all right. So, Thanksgiving, anybody having out-town guests come in? Are you having any out-town family coming in for Thanksgiving, anybody? Anybody, well, no one's gonna come to you, Commissioner Gandy, no one's gonna visit you. But anybody having out-town guests? I'm gonna have out-town guests, I have out-town guests, guests coming in from St. Louis, from Utah, from lots of places. If they get in a car accident and come into my house, they're not gonna call that local number. They don't know that local number, right? The truck drivers that are driving through this community, right, that are working on, uh, whether they're water haulers or whoever. If they're not from Lovington, they're not gonna call that local number, they don't know that local. And when they get in an emergency, whatever that emergency is, be it a car accident, someone's having a heart attack, whatever it is, they're not gonna Google, what is the fastest way to get, you know, Lovington here? They're gonna call 911. And what happens when they call 911? The call comes to us. And then if it's for a need for police, we basically relay that information to the police department, we don't dispatch for them. So time is lost. And, and, and that's what we're trying to minimize, that's what we're trying to get away from. And we're trying to do it in a cooperative way and reduce any barriers that the community may have, with any barriers that you all may have. And, uh, Angela may have more, Commissioner Jackson here is here as well, happy to stand for any questions that you all may have. But let me reemphasize, what the proposal is, and it's still pending commission approval, right? Where my, the staff's proposal is zero cost to the city of Lovington. So.
So the only question I have is, since we're doing regional relation, and you're saying there's possibly only five places in the state of New Mexico. So does that mean at some point that the, the LCCA will also absorb in Roswell, Carlsbad, those areas, or do you think that will be pushed more towards Las Cruces?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Gandy? In order for us to become, I, I don't, I don't see us dispatching for Roswell, I, I don't see it.
I'm just, yeah, it's one of those two biggest cities and I'm looking at it in a wide looking thing, you know, so it just makes sense to me that.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll tell you this, right now, the New Mexico State Police, they're here, the ones that are here now, they're dispatched by Las Cruces. So the technology is really there for the dispatching to be handled anywhere, right? It doesn't even need to be in Las Cruces, right? It, it really is the technology, and the technology is, is amazing. The deal with the regional dispatch centers is really, um, do we want to be in the running to handle our 911 calls? And I think we, as a community, the entire Lee County community, I think we would like to be in the running to take our 911 calls. All right, so if we can agree to that, how do we become more competitive to be a regional center? Well, the first question is, is that center already consolidated? So as the state is looking at who can be a good regional center, the first question is, does that, does a consolidated center, do they currently dispatch for all the communities in their county? And right now, we don't. So, and so the question is, well, how could LCCA possibly dispatch for Ra, uh, for Roosevelt County? Or for Talus, or Curry, or Union? I think we would be looking at going more, you know, to the north, right? Uh, how could we handle that? Responsible, we don't know if it, we don't know if the, the LCCA could handle that, they currently don't even dispatch for their, all their five municipalities. So I think that's a concern. Aside from that, aside from that, and I hate to use fear or threats as a way, as a purpose of doing something, I, I don't like that. But aside from that, forget, I mean, just put that on the, on the, on the, put that to the side. If we're interested in, you know, A, I mean, I'm not trying to get in your all business, but if we're interested in the city potentially saving money, one. Second, um, making the, the first responders be able to get to incidences quicker, two. Three, having the ability for all the communities to share information a lot easier, which is the stillman deal, we're all in the same system. Four, having all the first responders kind of on the same system and the same dispatcher so they can talk to each other. All of those kind of reasons to me, you know, are as good validation on its own. You know, but that's just, you know, from my perspective, and, and, and anyway, I don't mean to ramble on too much, but that's, you know.
I was just looking at the bigger picture down the road. Sure, pretty much sold on that deal anyway, and sure, the zero effect, sure, but yeah, um, you know, still not the fact, I mean, because I understand that but the zero effect really kind of hit sweet, swayed that way a little more. So, but I was just looking at the long-term, i- is that a poss, you know, is that a possibility? Which is in the long-term also an increase in jobs in Lee County, you know? It, if that would go somewhere else if we don't have it.
I, I think, uh, Mayor, Commissioner Gandy, I think we, um, you know, it's hard for us not dispatching for the communities now. If I were to look at, you know, what facilities are the newest, right? And the most modern and up-to-date, and, and have the technology that's curling like in place to do it, we hit, we check that box, right? We check the box that we're already up to speed, we have everything updated, uh, we do that, uh, where we're very good in terms of our replacement schedules on, on everything, uh, we check that box. We just don't yet check the box on, you know, dispatching for everybody. I believe we would have the capability. Uh, once we get these municipalities onboard, I believe, I full-heartedly believe that LCCA would have the ability to dispatch for other cities like Roswell, Chavis County. It's gonna take some, a lot of, you know, intergovernmental discussions, but I believe one-hundred percent that we can do that. Just gotta be a, you know, dialogue, county manager going to city commission meetings, you know, a little outside my comfort zone, anyway.
I have three questions, Mike.
All right.
One with us. If we do not become a regional center, is this gonna affect us in any way whatsoever, doing what we're doing now?
So, uh, Mayor, Commissioner Bold, so if we don't become a regional dispatch center, I think there are some negative things that we could be looking at. One, potentially, at a minimum, we're not gonna receive the grant funding that we've been receiving. So in the last ten years, we received six-point-seven-five-million-dollar LCCA, which means less cost to the county, which means the county can do more stuff with the communities. So we won't get that, we know that. Second, in terms of who's taking 911 calls, it's not gonna be us, it'll be the regional center. That's the whole purpose of the regional center. So that community touch that, or feel that the chief Miranda talked about in his presentation, right? It's not gonna be us taking the calls, it's gonna be somebody else, somewhere else. So I, while I think the technology's there, I think our preference is to do it. And that keeps people employed, and I think that gives us a better interaction with our first responders if our dispatchers are here, right? Did I answer your question? So I think that's a negative, that could be a negative thing, that we would lose that, that relationship, that personal relationship. You know, a lot of our dispatchers, you know, their spouses are partners, or sons or daughters, are police officers, firefighters, right? They have those personal connections, right? Even outside that, there's a lot of them are friends, right? They're, they're in the same kind of schedule, it's hectic, it's crazy, different, called hours, and they become friends. And that's, I think there's a value there. And then if we don't have that, if, if our share, our deputies or our police officers are getting dispatched from someone from Las Cruces, you know, I, I don't know if we're gonna get that feel.
Right, I mean, the starters, for what we're seeing today and talking about today, that will be affected if we do not become a regional center. The starters with everything that you're proposing offering to the city. And so, regardless, if we don't become a regional center, we're still gonna combine, we're still gonna join.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, Mayor, Commissioner Bold, so let me back out just a moment, I apologize. So this is the proposal.
Right.
And it's a proposal that, uh, the county commission still needs a vote on, they were very receptive to it.
Yes.
And so, I, so a lot of things are happening simultaneously. So the proposal pending commission approval is, um, on the table, whether we become regional or not. And we wanted to go into effect, you know, as early as December the sixth, between December the sixth and January tenth, you know, based on, it has a lot to do with, Anthony can speak to the phone companies and switching over lines, but, uh, the agreement, we would look at the commission, take action on this, this commission, this calendar year. The county commission take action on it this calendar year, and the LCCA board would take action on it this calendar year. And then become effective, probably January tenth of 2022.
Sure. The other question I had is, if we do become a regional center.
Yes, sir.
And I think you kind of addressed it with Scotty.
Yep.
That, how big are we gonna get being a regional center? That are we gonna be able to absorb everything in, that they're gonna be asking of the regional center? And I don't know if you have the answer to that, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
It's curious.
So, I'm gonna say, based upon our past performance, that we would be able to. I feel comfortable, and Angela feels comfortable, uh, Ms. Martinez and the commissioners, I believe, we feel comfortable talking to each of the communities about joining LCCA. We have ten years under our belt, we've been doing this for ten years, right? We've already been handling all the 911 calls in Lee County, right? Actually, the county's been doing that since, I think, 2003 or before, I'm not sure, but LCCA, last ten years, we've been doing that. So we spend a lot of time making sure that we don't take too much off. And then I think our past performance is, is an indicator that, that we're not gonna take on more than what we can handle. In terms of the accreditation standards, we became accredited, accredited first in 2015, re-accredited in 2018, now we're going back up for our third, and there's like a hundred-and-twenty-nine standards. And some of those standards have to do with your staffing levels and everything else. So I, I, I feel confident that we're gonna be, we're optimistic. You know, I don't see us overcommitting ourselves, I, I wouldn't see that. And I don't think, I, 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 personally, I don't see that, you know, and again, I'm a resident of Lovington, I'm aware of calls being answered, you know? I might call it.
And the last thing they have asked, Chief Miranda, as far as response time, what do we look at? Because I've been asked as far as, is it gonna affect response time? I'm thinking after hearing this, no, but I'm gonna ask you.
So, um, I wanna say that, uh, when people call 911, this will improve response time. Because the way it works now, all 911 calls come to the county's dispatch center. So if someone's in Lovington, right, somebody's breaking in their home, they need a police officer on scene, and they call 911, it goes to LCCA. LCCA gets the information, and they say, you kind of just stay on the line. And then another dispatcher calls up Lovington PD, hey, Lovington PD, we got an incident here on blah, 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 West Avenue J. Hey, Loveington PD, we got an incident here on blah, 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 West Avenue J. And then it goes from there. Versus if we were to do the dispatching, right? We wouldn't have to call up Loveington PD. There wouldn't be that, for lack of a better phrase, transferring the call. We would get the call, get the information, and then get Loveington PD on, on scene right away without repeating the information to another dispatcher. So in that sense, that would save time 100%. And, you know, again, I know there's a concern about this local number. I get the local number 100%. Folks that aren't from here, they're driving through. My family members are coming in from Utah or Albuquerque or elsewhere. You're all family members? You got family that come from New York? Maybe, right? So they come down to visit you guys, they're not going to call that local number when they get in a car accident. Or if they needed a police officer, they're going to call, you know, 911. That's just something to think about.
And Mike, can I ask F one thing?
Yeah.
Something to factor in, maybe you can touch on. Because of the additional technology we get, to have that GPS ping on that officer's laptop, I mean, as an officer, I've heard it up and down the street looking for a house number, burning up valuable time. I think with the increased technology of the officer being able to see where that call is coming from will cut down on response time. Even Kyle Fieldroos, and maybe Ms. Martinez.
I think one thing also bring back 911. The children are all raised to call 911. They don't know 39628, but those old school people know that. That's a key to keep in mind, too.
You know, talk about proximity, like someone calls in, kind of.
So you're talking about the 911, it'll automatically plot, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. So it'll automatically plot on the map. Approximately, would you say about four feet from where the caller's coming from? So if anybody inside this room called 911 right now, we would know exactly where you're at in this building. Because it'll land directly where you're at.
And sometimes we get callers that don't know where they are. And we have no way of finding them.
By the way, I'm just asking to hear back there from you at 911.
Sure, yeah.
It's the way number we call.
Right, yeah.
So I didn't know what we're talking about there. I'm just trying to put it out there so other people understand.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Gandy, I appreciate that. What other questions do you have for us? How could we help it or explain anything? Yeah, you want to talk about that?
One of the other things just to think about is the ISO rating for the fire department. I know we are ready dispatch for the fire department, but if, if say in the future we're not doing the Loveington Fire Department anymore, that can affect the ISO rating. Because the 911 center, that's where they, they get the questions like from the time we answer the call to the time we dispatch the call, the time we get the call in. Or the time we enter the call, dispatch the call. That plays a huge part on the ISO rating, which is the, for the fire department there. I know Chief can probably speak to that, but I don't know in the past, I don't know how many points you have received for the LCCA being the dispatch center, but I know it does help with the ISO.
Mayor Commissioner, it does, it's a component, it's probably a third of the scoring goals. We were fortunate enough back when ISO was dispatching 911 calls, to be able to be onboard with that, to be able to migrate into LCCA on the 911 system. And it has helped our ISO rating in points. I've gone through two ISOs where they've actually utilized LCCA's score value to figure out. So Chief is correct, it does help our ISO.
And then in turn, in for some of those, in turn, to keep our insurance rates and different things for the public citizens down, is what I've been told every time I get.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Gandy, yeah, so the ISO rating, right? It basically assesses, right, kind of the risk to insure property in an area, right? So the lower the score, right, right? It makes the property more insurable. And then in turn, people's insurance property rates should be less. They should pay a lower premium. That's the impact that residents in the community actually can, can actually feel, or can actually fill the wallet, or, you know, they can actually, that's their impact, part of their impact. So Mayor and Commissioners, what we were looking at, you know, we're going to, I have one commissioner here, and I have to report back, I have to report back to my board. We were hoping to have an item from our board, my board, to consider at their November 18th meeting. Hoping that my board could take action on, saw an agreement then, with the whole that you all would take action on something this calendar year, and then the LCCA board directors would take action on, on it at their December 1st meeting. You know, in terms of some terms of an agreement, basically it would say, you know, we're looking at sort of a 10-year timeframe, only because it's kind of the maximum we can do. I think our attorney said contract law or something, you guys can get into it. I actually went longer, but he said 10 years, but we can have automatic renewals after that. We're not looking at any type of callbacks or, let's say the county, you know, trying to call back any money from the city. It's basically, you know, we believe this is, this is what it would cost to dispatch for the city. The county will take that on, looking at doing it for 10 years. There's an automatic renewal, and what else? And that, which would include the maintenance for the spillman, maintenance, annual maintenance cost. Anything else?
Just about the same.
Oh, yeah. The big item on the spillman, we got a big discount for the municipality. So this is a big item. And we're looking at savings into the hundreds of six-figure savings, but it's only good for this calendar year. That's, that's a component, so that's, that's kind of part of the urgency. Love everybody, what do you want to do, it for least cost possible? So, you know, anyway, what else?
The board would agree if you put it in that time or next quarter.
Okay, that would be great.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add to that, sir?
I'm not sure if the county manager was looking for some direction. Is that what, what he might have been asking?
Yes, he was asking about putting that item up for an action on our next four weeks. That's what they were recommending. That way they can have this behind them before the end of this calendar year.
Well, you know, I like everything I'm hearing. I think the benefits far, are far greater than any disadvantage that we might face. So I like it. And I appreciate the presentation, the time put into this.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins.
Thank you.
Turn it like that next time.
Can't go now, it'd be a lot easier.
It'll be November 22nd.
November 22nd, there. Mayor Commissioners, thank you so much. I also wanted to just express our appreciation to both your chiefs, big time. We had to get a lot of information from them to help figure this out. They were very helpful in the time that we got to spend with your dispatchers. So we're happy to offer you all any tours, or sit down with you all to, you know, give you anything else that you would like to know.
You need me to put that phone number up there by your house?
No, sir, I'm good, I appreciate that. Thanks, neighbor. Thank you.
Chief? Next non-action item would be discussion by the mayor of the Chaparral Park House.
Okay, just quickly, Commissioners, I was just going to ask for direction. On the Chaparral Park House, it is currently vacant. I just wanted to give direction, do you want to hold it or sit out of possibly using it? City manager's housing, police housing, anything like that, any recommendations on that?
I have some pictures that Crystal provided, I mean, of the house, if you guys want to see.
Yeah, I've been wanting to pass them, I think.
Yeah, the house needs, you know, some, and a little bit of touch-ups here and there. There is one restroom that has the vanity broken completely down that would need to be replaced. The second bathroom, I did have to shut off that water to that toilet right there. The guts of the tank need to be replaced, they're just all rotten and it doesn't stop running. The garage, just of course, we need to get, you know, the things that are in there out. And then the back door had a large hole in it, and the electric panel, like the door, you can see them laying on the ground. So that would need to be repaired. Other than that, it was minor cleaning. There did appear to be no roof leaks. None of the windows broken or anything when I was in there. The only access from the outside was this open door. But this door is in the garage area, which is locked off from the rest of the main town.
Does that current create a slowdown?
Yes.
And currently, we have no, no one interested in our staff, has no one assigned to that.
Well, which was usually previously used for.
The Parks and Rec Supervisor lived there.
And before that, we, for police officers that were going through the academy, it's kind of an incentive that they lived out of town. Get three off, well, I lived there, I lived there for six months in 2011. We had three officers in there, and all of them were from out the area. So it helped us get on our feet and find local housing.
I think that'd be a good idea right there as far as the police, because we've had issues with it brought in front of us here as far as people with loud cars and racing in there, and how would that affect them?
I'd have to get off the couch and close the gate every night at 11 in the clock.
So, you know, that's a possibility right there.
Yes, sir.
And then just to, to stay under the guidelines, you know, we can't give it free because it's an anti-donation, through the anti-donation clause, but we charge them a little bit. But it's something that we have, cost, cost, total problem.
I think in the current town, it would be a great place to, perhaps, for a little bit, but some point we would want to do. Removing it or demoing it, just because it goes a distance certain. It causes a bigger issue, concerns, different things like that, so. That's my opinion. Hanging on to it for a while.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, I like, I like the idea, as long as we don't give it away. I'd like to consider that as a part of the compensation. That way we could save money from, you know, off the top regarding any offer that we might make.
Commissioner Gandy?
At our current situation, I think it's a good thing hanging on to, like Commissioner Gandy said, but having an incentive for a city manager to come in and maybe stay, you know, for his term or until he's fully evaluated. You know, he might not want to move his family there, you know, rent a motel. Be a good thing, just hang on for a little while.
Yeah, I mean, you have a power of the city manager, officers and everything.
Yeah, they can all hear it's saying.
All right.
Commissioner Bold?
I was saying, I think it allows you for this.
Hold on to it, find out what's up, come to the person, I want to address the board with the chief.
Next discussion item, as Chief Lizard is going to talk about the upcoming holidays and the impact because of the reduced hours work schedule. Mayor Commissioners, I'm like Chief Brad, they did, our holidays are set at the beginning of each year for our, for ordinances. The ones that are of interest right now is going to be Thanksgiving Day, the day of after Thanksgiving, and then also Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Where it's unique in that they've always been towards the end of the week. Thanksgiving obviously on Thursday, and then the day after would be that Friday. Currently with the 34-hour, are the employees that are on a reduced work hours. They are scheduled Monday through Thursday. Some departments are Monday through Thursday, 8 to 5:30. And that, that's a total of 34 hours for that. With the holidays on top of the, the same ordinance, when you get a little bit further down, it talks about if the holiday falls on the day of, that the employee is off, that we have to, we try to work with them on their fault. They're either before or fall on a workday. As well as if it falls on a Saturday, we observe it on that Friday. If it falls on a Sunday, we observe it on that Monday. This year with, with Thanksgiving and the other, we have the employees that are off on Fridays. So that would make that Friday day have to be caught either that Monday, or it would have to fall back on that Wednesday, or push everything back a day. So what we were looking at is potentially doing a modified schedule for Thanksgiving, and this would be the eight and a half hours each day, Monday and Tuesday, and including the two holiday days, Thursday and Friday. They would continue, they would have those same, but it would show that the observed day for the employees would be that actual Wednesday. So the potential of shutting down the city hall, which would be the only one, would be shut down at, when, or on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday that week. Currently, we do have some employees that are salaried. They do work 80-hour paid periods. So those individuals would have to work that Wednesday until they do, like the traditional schedule. The employees that are on, like it says there, that are on, on shift, your fire, your police, and anybody that would come out for overtime, that overtime would only be observed on those holidays that were already set, which would be that Thursday and Friday. Christmas is a, it's a little bit different of an animal, because Christmas Eve is on Friday and Christmas Day is actually on that Saturday. So it's kind of the same unique situation. If we were to move it to Monday as an observed holiday, the only other issue is we have the first, which is that Saturday, is New Year's Day, which is another holiday that we would have to observe. And so the, the plan that you see in front of you is to take that first week of Christmas and do the exact same thing, give the employees off on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then they would come back to work that Monday, and then work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and be off Thursday. And this is all based off of what we have in our ordinances on personnel, and wanted to kind of get you guys this direction. Or go ahead and blessing the removed board of this call.
I asked the chief to present to you guys, because I was a little bit confused myself. Now, had a better understanding of it more. I just didn't want to, I also was recommended we didn't leave it on Monday. So I liked the idea of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That would start a fresh start on Monday. That was my recommendation to the chief. Just thought it was more performant, ensuring everybody was up to speed and see if they agreed with this schedule.
I absolutely hate it. But there's no way around it, unfortunately, due to the production hours. And that's what driving the house is. You can't really do it this way or that way, you're simply a short man. People won't have anything. Yeah. It's like part of my lower posterior.
I agree, and that's why I prefer to just organize in weeks, at least, not for the following week. But I wanted to be more clearly for the board of commissioners. You don't understand why they were closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They called and they said, well, we're closed three days.
If I may, we obviously will post the days that we're closed to the public. So that way they're aware, that they can pay wire bills, they can do some, or, or questions concerning that.
I would have to do some, that's, close. That's the issue I think there. The citizens thought we were going away till the last minute, and then they're going to say we were closed.
Yeah.
So they have to be a little flexible than they normally are.
And we are, the water department is as well, when you get the 26 falls like on Sunday or even Friday, now that we're still have the day closed, they still give that Monday after, that full day to pay for getting charged like $50. So, so they are considerate over that anyways.
One of the other reasons to come at this first meeting in November is to not only get it out right now, but to also start letting, notifying everybody in the public, too.
Any, any questions?
Appreciate the presentation, chief.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the last non-action item will be.
It's, it's.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eighty-nine approval of bond.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard.
If I may, I recommend that we go ahead and either table or remove it. We, there was a mistake on the resolutions. We were sent two and we only had one. It said as one action item. And so when I talked to Mr. Brian Hanks today, he, he was going to get back to me. He didn't. But he said that if it needs to be at the next commission meeting, that's fine. That way we can have two separate items for the two separate resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a motion to table this until the November meeting.
Gandy amended his motion to table, taken by Mr. Bernard. Further discussion. There's no further discussion, we'll call Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Trivia?
Yes. President's table, we have a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero amount zero approval to revise ordinance five eighty-seven for redistricting.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Andy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Shannon.
Yes, um, y'all have the copy of the ordinance. If your stations there, I did. Did you see, we think the map's on there? That's why I'm here. Okay, I also gave maps. Okay. And, um, oh, Jalen, I do pictures probably worth it. Pictures worth a thousand words. So the map does show the deviations there or the changes. They're not, they're not real simple, but they didn't change much. District two picked up West Oak North between seven and six and between eight and second north to the city limits. District three picked up West Avenue Page between seventh and thirteenth street. South of Avenue Page Avenue M between ninth and thirteen. District four picked up south of Avenue L to Avenue M between thirteenth and seventeenth. And District five lost south of West Avenue K between seventh and thirteenth and Avenue L south to Avenue M between thirteenth and seventeenth. I did talk to Michael Sharp today and he's working on the, the maps, the final, the final maps. And I did tell him that this would be going to, to be adopted on December thirteenth, because we have to allow for a minimum of two weeks advertising on the ordinance. That's why we're moving to December thirteenth. But he is going to be getting those final maps.
Action. Turned in questions for redistricting. Commissioner Combs, do you have any question?
Oh, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trivia?
Yes. Thanks to add motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-one. Approval, approval to admit UACO of the bill.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Shannon.
Oh, yes. This is for the changes that were discussed a couple of meetings ago about, um, including in the health insurance costs for thirty hours or more a week in forty-four, that they would be included. That's right, the offered insurance that conforms with the Affordable Care Act and also to allow elected officials to participate in the health insurance.
Any questions about?
Yes, I have a question. Patrick. Stated before, we've all found back numerous years, have we found anything that pertains to city commissioners? Have an insurance provider, have you found anything in that?
No.
So in my eyes, we haven't had this as a discussion. We haven't put this in there. So the city commission section needs to be a discussion and a resolution needs to be made pressing the city commission health concerns.
Well, I think that, um, I don't, I don't know whether it has to come with a discussion item before just an action. But I think it's something that the council needs to address e-either through discussion here on this action item or by a motion by somebody, not somebody, but council member.
And I'm not aware of how do we do the health insurance for commissioners as I was saying? Receive health insurance to the city. So is it the same as the employees, is it a percentage? What I would know?
Yeah, my understanding would be that, um, what's offered to the employees, that employee, he or she could choose, I think, four different options from a single individual to, um, the employee and spouse, to employee child or employee family. And so I think that same, those four same categories would be offered then to commissioners. And my understanding is that the percentage that the city pays would be the same between, um, city commissioners and employees. So, so they would have the same opportunity. It's just one category for elected officials. But it would be under the same terms and conditions that we offer it to the city employees. That's, that's my understanding of how.
I just wanted to make sure that was done the right way, that it wasn't added in forthcoming as far as how we're doing it.
You mean it?
The city commissioners to this, but we weren't on there before as far as the health insurance.
Right, so, um, the council, um, they, they were on there, at least as far as I know, from anecdotal information. So I didn't look at any single policy prior to the one that we have now. But it's my understanding that that was an option that was available. It was on our policy. I don't know when the city council would, um, elected to include elected officials on there as a category that's eligible for insurance. I haven't found that. But I think sometimes during Mr. Wise's tenure, it, we changed from one insurance company or one provider to another. And I think around that time, it was not included on the, uh, new insurance. So I don't know, I've not found anything that said it was by design or whether someone dropped the ball and it just didn't get on there. But I think the change for this particular one is not just to include a category for, um, elected officials, but also to make a change on the minimum number of hours, which I think Shannon talked about. So those are the two changes from our existing policy that I'm aware of that, that you guys are voting on, that the commission is voting on.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? No further discussion, we'll call old Shannon.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
No.
Commissioner Combs?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trivia?
Yes. President's pass, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-two updating.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Gandy, by Mr. Bernard. Chief.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, um, this resolution is for the, uh, city signature cards. Apparently we have Anthony Dawes, uh, former Chief Rodriguez and former Public Works Director Wyatt Duncan on there. We have, um, or this resolution is to remove them and add Chief Miranda as the other signature currently right now. It's myself and Shannon are the only, uh, employees at the city currently that have the ability to sign the checks for the city. Um, and so this would handle until we have a new city manager and finance director. At that time, we would come back to you guys and remove ours, remove us off of that card.
Any discussion? No, no discussion, we'll call Shannon.
Commissioner Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Trivia?
Yes. President's pass, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-one that oh eighty-eight First Amendment to the City Court Cooperative Agreement.
Second.
Take it.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard.
This is our amendment to the, with the NMDOT for the, uh, cooperative agreement we have with them to place the water line in Main Street while they do their drainage and highway project improvement. So basically this gives the city seventy-two hours to reply to an RFI, which an RFI is just a request for information. So basically me or Chief Lozardo or someone would be able to answer something that like that without having to come to commission. But then, uh, the change order request has to be done within ten days. So that a change order, of course, involves an actual cost there. So those change orders, then we would have to present each one of those to commission within ten days preceding it. And you guys would have to give us the information to get back to NMDOT on this. So, uh, basic contract, Patrick had them change a couple of wording things and, um, we're both good with it now?
Yeah, I think, um, making the change in, uh, that paragraph, I think clarified that, we were, we were reiterating the terms and conditions of the original agreement. If you read their language, I think you could open it up and have the city be a little bit more liable for things that we didn't agree to. And so they said that's not what their intent was. So the easiest thing to do is to say, okay, if you didn't intend to expand our liability, our financial liability from the original agreement, let's just tie it back to the original agreement. And that's what they accepted. So I'm fine with that language.
What was the part of there that you were saying about removal? They could have us remove something that was in the original?
It is in the original agreement, uh, that we would have to.
Something you took out?
No, no, that's in the agreement. We can't change that. If, uh, if we don't pay this back is where we could have to remove our utilities from their property, which is.
Because I read that. He outside of this.
Yeah, so their language, as I read it, expanded our liability, our risk, both for moving, um, utilities and also financial. And so when we asked them, did you intend to do that? They said no. And I said, well, then let's just tie it back to our original.
So I'm sure, because I seen that in there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking. So I'll see it then.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the language we have now. State liked it. And so, you know, I think they said that language matches up closer with what their intent was. And so everybody should be happy.
Turned in further questions? There's no further questions, we'll call Shannon.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trivia?
Yes. Resolution back, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-three consideration of the physical public purpose to conduct geophysical operations.
Take it.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard.
Uh, yeah, this is on the, um, geophysical, uh, company that wanted to come in and do some work in properties and on properties we own. Finally got most of the language fixed. I know, uh, Patrick had one more issue, but he said, uh, actually on current yeah, on current four port one, there's this place where it states about right of ways. We actually don't have the authority to like let them do that in a right of way. They can do it in streets. I think is that the easiest way to explain that?
Yes, so we had, um, an original agreement with Dawson. It's, um, I sent a version over to James that I use quite regularly. I think he tweaked that version a little bit and we use that for the initial, um, geophysical activity in the well field. And so subsequently Dawson wants to go back and do a little bit more work in the well field. There's some work that's going to take place at the city farm outside the pivot area. So it's in grass area as well. We could use the same version that we've signed with Dawson on the well field. There may be one other site that's more of a pasture land. What I was looking at, and I've already talked to, um, Mr. Aldrich about it. And, and, and the issue here is that, um, Dawson wants to take a look at two streets, um, north of Gum. And so what they wanted to do is to place certain devices in the roadway, not blocking traffic or anything like that. But they also wanted to include the easements that go along with that road. So these are dedicated streets. It's streets that the city owns as opposed to the street being an easement. But the city also has an easement on both sides of those roads for things such as sidewalks or utilities. So if Dawson were installing fiber optic or a gas line or a water line, those are things that are contemplated and agreed to in that easement. What Dawson wants to do is not something that's contemplated in the use of that easement. So we can't give them permission to use the easement, but we give them permission to use the road. And so what would happen is if they wanted to get far back off of the road surface, they'd have to talk to those individual homeowners. It's a couple of short strips of, um, the road that's up there. So I don't know if that'd really be an issue. The only other issue to take into consideration is when, um, Dawson, um, did their activity in the well field, there were certain types of equipment that they used and the pay rate was based on that equipment use, uh, per acre basis. Some of the equipment is going to change and so it's invasive. And so instead of being at like fifteen dollars an acre, it's, I think, seven fifty. But, um, uh, Mr. Aldrich can explain that. And those are the other considerations then for the city is to take a look at what other devices are going to be used, what's the rate? And that's just something that, that you'd have to be comfortable with. I can say that in my experience, looking at the different rates, those are generally consistent, not just with city property, but with all the other people that are having those same things happen on similar type surface. So if you have grassland and there's thumper trucks coming through, it's usually fifteen dollars an acre. And that's across the board. I think that's where we were on the last one. But Mr. Aldrich can explain to you the different types of equipment. And so the only suggestion I would have is that we need to determine what the cost or what the rate would be per acre. And that's, that's a discussion you should have with Mr. Aldrich. And then on number eight, I think we could take out a little bit of language. I've always already talked to Rick and so I, I think we can get that put together and agreed to. There's one small amendment to that and we should be good to go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Any questions? What would, uh, you know, the sixty-ten permit, that, if you'll recall, that's the permit that covered the, the water field the first part of the year that we came in and did the channel. Sorry about it. What they have done, they have found something down there that they like. So we're going back and laying out just the receiver portion of the project. There's no vibrator trucks, nothing else in there at this time. And that's the reason for the seven hundred and fifty cents half rate. Like I said, you know, we've just, just lying out back over what we've already done the first part of the year. The four point one, that's not an issue. It's, as I've already discussed, you know, we can take that out. We're, you know, the easement portion of the permit, we're fine. That's no problem. Only thing we're using the street bar is the recording boxes. Those can be laid out in the middle of the street, you know, that will lay up to the side. Those can be laid out in the middle of the street, you know, that will lay up to the sides of the street. That's not an issue. Other than that, anything else? Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one. Like, like you say, you're doing yourself being the machines or I know that's that will be a precedent issue. But if there is some damage, for instance, to anything, they actually report that to they can.
We have.
Directly.
Yes, sir. And all the property owners have, all the permits have my name or one of our other agents' name and phone number on them. We do have door hangers that we're going to be hanging out where we're in the residential areas. I have visited with Chief Miranda about possibly having a place escort while we're in those areas. I have dispatch number to call and let them know where we're going to be, when we're going to be there.
So you guys have to have the insurance to cover that for the property owner?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be on them, it would be on you guys.
Yeah, we have provided the city with a $5 million certificate of issue.
Thank you, sir.
But the permit fees are, you know, they're not, they're indemnified. There's no.
So I have a question for Patrick.
Yes.
You were talking about some items that both the owners and Aldridge talked about. Does that need to be addressed and taken care of before we approve this?
On the permit for 4.1, yes. And so what I was going to do is give you the language to remove that paragraph eight. I already talked to Rick about it. So I think it's acceptable to him. And the reason, oh yeah, sure, there's a comma and a couple of words. It's and I guess what you could do is make that part of the packet and just say, you know, some moved in accordance with the amendments to paragraph eight, or you could read them, whatever is acceptable.
I thought you were going to say approve, but before we decide.
Yeah, I understand what you meant. Yeah. There was no, I didn't take it as you would, you know, automatically approve it. Yeah, everybody's got it.
Yes.
Is everybody good with the $1.50 per acre plus the $0.75 on the, unfortunately, every dollar?
And that is, I think, the standard rate that everybody else is getting. So we're not getting any more or any less. It's always been pretty consistent.
Do you like to amend that? In?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to my motion to approve changes from Patrick on paragraph eight.
Paragraph eight of permit 4.1.
Hmm, yes.
I need to read that?
I think you could say some move. We'll just attach that as part of the packet. And I've already talked to Rick about those. And so I think we'll give it.
Commissioner Compost, you want to second that?
Yes, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Compost. We'll call Vol. Shannon.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Yes. President's passes. Do I have a motion?
So. Get those signed.
I would also, excuse me, I'd also like to thank Crystal. She is she's a, she's a good one. Don't know what you want, but she's helped me a lot.
Bye, thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Pope, Councilor, seconded by.
Second.
Turning discussion.
Yeah, I couldn't get to it right now, but I know where I'm going on the credit card for blacks for the cemetery, 700 and something.
There are big, big flags, what he told. Like real big flag.
The national flag.
United, yeah, United States and all that. Big. Lasting that long. What?
How many?
Um. I think he said for this cemetery and.
Also, it's for all. It's going to come. I was thinking something about that.
I know, I asked him too.
So on a unique vacuum trucks, that's $6,000. I know we have a lot of lift station damage still. So do we have any time for anyone? I think I haven't got compared. Yes, sir. It was compared for two weeks. I know when we were best for the wall, so I was just wondering. Yes. Awesome, thank you. I did wonder if they, we have one previous to that.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Compost?
No, I think that somebody already asked a question about unique vacuum shelves or vacuum service?
Yes.
Okay. What was that about? I missed it. I'm sorry.
That was some lift stations. We had two lift stations go down, assignments, assignment eventually. So they, they in repair. So the cost shouldn't see that cost as high as next time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Bowles? Roll call, Vol. Shannon.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Go ahead and file a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Compost, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we'll call Vol. Shannon.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yeah.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.